Okay, so we'll get this thing going. So welcome everybody to our city council meeting of April 27, 2021. And consistent with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings, such that an in-person meeting of the city council is not possible. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. And if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications or the public hearing or a public hearing to be recognized to speak. And in attendance tonight, and I'm just going to go from my top left hand to my bottom right hand. We have myself, Councilor LeBlanc. We have Councilor Memhard, Councilor Pet, Councilor Cox, Councilor Holmgren, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Gilman, Councilor Nolan, Councilor O'Hara, and we have a, we have a full city council. Also in attendance this evening, we have our mayor, Mayor Taken. We have our CFO, John Dunn. We have our assistant to our CAO, Chris Sicarenza. We have our harbor master, TJ Shimitaro. And all right, so seeing that, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The first order of business is oral communications.
Okay, so under oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of time of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individuals. All right, so we have fifteen people on the panel and we have eleven attendees. And I'm going to open it up to-
Councilor, can I just ask a question? Are we going to not allow litigation conversations tonight?
Um, we, we will not be listening to anything if we're under litigation.
Okay, so public comments for that matter will not be permitted. Okay, thank you.
And the reason is, is under our rules of procedure, you're supposed to get a response within ten, within your your ten, two-week period, and we won't be able to respond to any of these oral communications, plus we're in litigation, so.
Great, thank you.
Joanne, can you make me a co-host, please, so I can bring the panelists, the attendees in?
You're all set.
All right, great. So we have oral communications. Patty, can you hear me?
Hi, Steve. Yes, am I on?
Yes, name and address for the record, please.
Great. Patty Page, Three Title Cove Way. I'm here to request a budgetary line item you put forward in this year's budget to purchase and support a full-capacity Zoom account. The cost estimate is very modest, generally under $4,000 a year. The adaptation of Zoom call meetings in the COVID era has proven to be essential for the continuation of government and societal functions. Federal, state, city governments and private companies have adapted seamlessly and have derived many long-term benefits. Recording of important city presentations and events held in City Hall is a benefit to city officials and our citizens. Currently recorded coverage for meetings beyond City Council and school committees does not exist. Technological advances allow important city meetings and presentations held by various boards and commissions, the outcomes of which affect the entire city, to be available for citizens to participate in or refer to at a later time, from the convenience of home or from anywhere around the world. Accurate, detailed information not available in the transcription of minutes is of legal benefit to municipalities. Attending meetings in person at City Hall or elsewhere around the city where audio transmission is difficult affords no public access viewing of documents while sitting in cold, hard cheers for hours should no longer be acceptable. The only access afforded for public participation. The only disability accommodation afforded in City Hall is to provide lift access. This is insufficient. It does not take into account the many varied disabilities that exist. Mobility issues, health issues, logistic issues, transport issues, age, weather issues, time, effort, other conditions, and simple convenience are a reality. If necessary, the Human Rights Commission should be asked to render an opinion. Moving forward, a hybrid of in-person and continued Zoom access for all meetings should be authorized and budgeted for. The universal access Zoom provides encourages and enables civic participation. The numbers of participants to city means has dramatically risen over the year. As evidenced here tonight, the ease by which public participation can be afforded is an asset to government function. This is good public transparency and excellent ADA accommodation. Please ask the administration to afford the citizenry this small-budget item and this reasonable accommodation. Thank you. And with my thirty-five seconds, I'd like to remind you, the mosquito opt-out program is coming up recommendation from the Board of Health. Please endorse that as written without any amendments or further use of pesticides, chemicals, as the board has recommended. Your health department and Board of Health are experts in that field. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And we will be having a public hearing at the city council level on that.
I'm well aware.
The fifteenth?
The eleventh.
May eleventh.
Yeah, the fifteenth is the deadline, Steve.
That's right.
Yeah, and thank you for, thank you for all those accommodations. They're very important to our community.
Thank you, Patty. All right, up next, we have Olympia. Olympia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Steve.
There we go. First try. Good job.
I know.
Name and address, name and address for the record, please.
Olympia Palazola, fifty-seven Western Avenue, Gloucester, Mass. I have three comments. You may be cutting me off, but let me just make them as quick as possible. I know the height exemption is going before P and D, and it's not going to be talked about tonight. But I just want to make sure that P and D committee knows how high the ground is going to be built up to make the building street level. That was from the, from one of the engineers from Doran Woodya, said that it would be street level. So thirty-five feet plus the added street level could make this building quite high. So just want yous to be aware of that, and I'm sure you, maybe you are, maybe you aren't, was only spoke at one meeting about that. The second thing I wanted to mention is, after reading today's newspaper, I want to know if the school committee chairperson does the say-
I'd like to call a point of order. I think we were clear before we started the public comments that this was something that we would not be in a position to discuss or listen to tonight.
So I just want to know who has the, who has the right to, to start, to put, to take a building down?
We're gonna, we're gonna have an executive session on this next week, Louise, so we're not going to talk, we're not going to discuss this this evening. Plus, it's in litigation.
Right, and I understand. I just, it just sounded like he had the right to make the decision on whether they take down veterans. That's all. And I just want to know who has the right to make that decision. Okay? All right, and I understand. I'll probably get cut off for this one as well. But a few months ago, I brought up the, the fact that elderly people, their taxes going up, especially with this new school project, and with the price of building supplies, they're talking about it all over the news that they've doubled. And I, I just want to make, it's an awful comment, and I probably shouldn't be saying this. But when I made a comment about that the last time, I really wasn't talking about myself. I was talking about all the elderly people, just not myself. And out of the blue came a loud voice saying, Louisa, Louisa! I wasn't, I was shocked, and it was the mayor. And she said, "You live on the boulevard. Why would you complain?" So I'm gonna-
I would call a point of order. We, we're in, point of order.
Louise.
No disparaging of city officials on oral comment or during this meeting.
I, I'm not comfortable with listening.
That's okay. I'm done. I, I just want to say that because that was a comment that was made, and no one stopped.
No, you said you were done. Please be done. You said you were done, Louise. Please be done.
I'm done.
All right, thank you, Louise. All right, is there anybody else?
Point of order, point of order, Mr. President.
All right, Jamie.
Can you disclose what lawsuits that these people, our taxpayers, can't speak of? I know of the school, Haskell Reservoir, our harbor master. How many other lawsuits do we have in the city that the people, our taxpayers, can't speak of? This is their right. We are covered under the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Jamie, I'm going to call point of order on you, sir. I'm going to call point of order. This is litigation that we're talking about that we can't discuss.
You'd answer my question. How many lawsuits can these disclose? Which lawsuits are we talking about?
Councilor O'Hara, you know the answer, so you can-
No, I, I know, I know. Which one? Tell them so that the people understand.
You're out of order, Councilor O'Hara. I'm sorry. We're in litigation and we're not discussing any of this tonight, so, all right.
Disclose which lawsuits. Are you talking about the school? Which ones?
We do not debate, Councilor O'Hara, we do not debate oral communications. Thank you, you're out of order. Next order of business, please. Annette, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address, please.
Annette Dionne. I'm on Main Street in Gloucester.
Could you have, can we have a number, please? We need your address for the record.
One fourteen Main Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I, I'm just going to read my concern of, I, I'm, I'm a resident who's extremely concerned about the water supply issue on Cape Van.
Point of order, Annette. I, I apologize for interrupting, but that's your business address. Just please clarify, okay? And that's fine, but just make sure that we are all aware that's your business address.
That's my business address. Okay.
What is your, what is your residence, Annette, please? We usually have a residence because we got people that are out of the city that have a business here that oral communications is for, for residents, so we usually ask for a residential address, please.
Does that mean I can't talk about this issue?
No, you can go right ahead, but we're just giving you our information. Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I'm very concerned about the water supply issue. I know since I grew up here, every single summer, there's, it seems like almost every summer, we have a water ban or water shortages. I just want to read a little bit of a letter that I wrote to the paper. I consider the circumstances in Texas and a, a short time ago, a really frightening warning where, where these things, the infrastructure wasn't looked at. I've seen Thatcher Road, Gloucester Crossing, the former Cameron's, Main Street Properties, Atlantic Road. The list goes on and on. There are houses, new housing is being built, like all over the island. We all live here. We all know that that is happening. I have yet to see the, the address, the issue of the aging water sewer treatment plant, which, as we all know, is in a flood zone. I don't, haven't heard of any plans to upgrade.
Right, Councilor Zepia.
And the, you know, Gloucester Crossing with two hundred new apartments. I am literally scared for our community that we are going to have a water supply shortage crisis disaster that I just, I, I'm sincerely concerned. That I just haven't heard this ever addressed in this community. We have the potential to run out of our water supply. We're only fed by reservoirs. I don't know if any provisions have been made for that situation. I would, I would just like to know that it's being, it's being talked about at least because it feels like it's really not a control because it is. And I, I'm not sure where the water is going to come from when we already experienced water shortages. All of you know this because you, you're here almost every summer and, including last summer. So I guess my question is, is this being looked at? Including the water sewer treatment plant that needs, that needs an upgrade and it's in a flood zone. We know when it's high tide, you know, and especially in a storm, we're in a global climate emergency. It's not a matter of when, you know, if we're going to have a hurricane, we will have a hurricane. It's, it's a matter of when, and, and everything's going to go down. And what happens if we do run out of water and we can't flush our toilets, the restaurants can't be operating, we can't take a shower, we can't drink the water, and we think it's so like far-fetched, but it happened in Texas. People couldn't even, they didn't even have drinking water. So I, I'm literally scared. I did present this issue. I sent, I sent this letter to the Times that I wrote to nine city councillors, and I was really frightened when nobody responded. Until after I sent it a second time, I was literally scared. This keeps me awake at night.
Okay, anything else, Annette?
Yeah, I, I would just like to know that it's being addressed, if and when.
You will get, you will get a, you will get a response.
Miss Dionne has not provided us with her residential address, and I believe that Councilor-
I, I'm just, I'm just, I, I'm just finished, so I, I have to go, but thank you.
You live in Rockport, though, just for the record.
Okay, and now I did respond to your email several times until you questioned my residency.
And so did I.
Okay, anyway, so now, does she live in Rockport? Everybody know? Okay, so next time, next time we'll have to do it. That's why I shouldn't want to do it. Okay, all right. Anybody else for oral communications? A lovely oral communication segment of our city council this evening. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next order of business. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business was supposed to be a presentation by Karen Carroll for the Public Health Director, and that is being continued till May eleventh, twenty twenty-one due to she was not able to attend this meeting at the last minute.
Yes, she did reach out to me and I told her it was fine, so we'll get an update from her very shortly. Okay, next order of business, please.
Is the consent agenda.
All right, is there any, any councillors that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Cox, seconded by Councilor Nolan, and I will call for the roll call. Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
And Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as written passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Is the stand-in committee of the BNF meeting of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
All right, Councilor Cox, you get your camera ready for the full moon this evening?
Uh, it's all ready to go downstairs. I just need to make sure I can get there before it fully rises. I present you guys tonight a consent agenda. If anybody has anything they would like to pull, please let me know. Again, the majority of the consent agenda is donations and grants, so yay.
All right, was anybody who liked to remove anything from budget finance consent agenda?
Seeing none, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Cox, seconded by Councilor Memhard. Anything else, Councilor? Any discussion on it?
No.
All right, so I will call for the roll. Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes, I just want to get a robe on.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
And Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Motion to accept the unanimous consent agenda passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, Madam Clerk, the next orders of businesses, please.
Okay, so the ordinance and administration did not meet due to the holiday on April nineteenth, so the next order would be the Planning Development Standing Committee report of April nineteenth.
All right, Councilor Gilman.
April twenty-first, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, so, so we have one motion, and, and we're happy that Chris LaPointe, who is the representative, representing Green Belt, is here for any council question. So thank you, Chris, for being here and for your great presentation last week at P and D. On a motion by Council Holmgren, seconded by Council Pet, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that city council approve the foregoing conservation restriction from Mount Adna Cemetery Company to Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., as being in the public interest pursuant to section thirty-two of chapter one eighty-four of the Mass General Law, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Holmgren. Any, any council discussion?
I would say that this is a wonderful step for our city. We're protecting land and making sure that there's nice trails and passage, and there's some great safety matters that have been considered in this as well, long-term safety matters. And I, I would just ask that if anybody has any questions, I'm just delighted that Chris LaPointe is here representing Essex County Green Belt. But we had a rigorous conversation in P and D, and I hope that councillors approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Pat.
Yes, just to sort of educate everyone a little bit further from what Council Gilman just said when we talked about, obviously, improving, you know, additional open space. She talked about improving safety, and just wanted to let everyone know, and Chris can confirm if there's any questions about it. They were talking about safety for our citizens walking on Leonard Street where there's a dangerous corner, and what they've been able to do is make some trails, et cetera, through that are going to alleviate the people having to walk and, you know, be out there on the street. So that's, that's what she's referring to there on the safety, and Chris can, you know, explain further if anyone needs to do that. But we want to thank them for including that in their, you know, in this presentation to the city.
Thank you, Barry. Anybody else? Council Gilman?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that the, there was a massive fundraising effort to purchase the piece of land now known as one oh nine R Leonard Street for $650,000. And it was basically a grassroots effort from the residents of Anasquam to partner with Green Belt, and I think that that's commendable, so really a group effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Christine, that we have you here, and you took time out of your evening. Would you like to say a little something about this?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councillors, for the time this evening. I'll, I'll be brief. Councilor Gilman has done a great job outlining it, but as, as she mentioned, this was a, this was a a joint effort between Green Belt and the Mount Adna Cemetery, actually back in two thousand and seventeen now, to, to purchase the property in its entirety from Peggy Willman, and the vast majority of it will remain protected open space owned and controlled by Green Belt and open to the public for passive recreation and protecting views from Lobster Cove and, and the rest of the village. And what's the subject of the vote this evening is that, as, as was always contemplated, Mount Adna is sort of part of the project was that they will acquire a parcel that's a little under an acre for a potential future cemetery expansion. This is adjacent to their beautiful cemetery, which is a tremendous resource for folks who walk through it and enjoy it. But as part of that transaction, we're going to take back a conservation restriction so that the activities forevermore are limited to, you know, cemetery expansion and/or open space and, and public access. So that's the, that's the, the sum total of the project. We really appreciate the support of the council and the partnerships that we have with the city.
Awesome. Thank you, Chris, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Any other council discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the roll. Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Sorry, yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
And Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, Chris, thank you. I appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you, Chris.
Have a good one. All right. What do you got next, Bill? Anything?
No, that's it.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
It's a public hearing, twenty twenty-one dash zero one-two, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter ten, Waterways, Section ten dash fifty-one E, fees by striking $100 in the last sentence in this section and adding $150.
All right. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. Mr. Shimitaro.
Evening, Council. Mr. President, thank you. This is brought forward by the City Gloucester Waterways Board and the Harbor Masters Office. This was originally brought forward and voted on and approved by the Waterways Board back in twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen timeframe, along with a bunch of other ordinance changes that we kind of conducted an audit and went through everything and looked at pricing, and this was one of the things that we had voted in favor of for the launch service. It just got lost in translation somewhere between mayor's reports and BNF or in, you know, this, myself and the Waterways Board Chair and the, and the help of the clerk's office to try to figure out where the mishap was where this didn't get to a full council vote, but we're bringing it back forward tonight to make it right, get it voted on, and get it amended in the ordinance. So this is old but new.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? I'm going to repeat, if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. If you're watching on a device, you, there is a raised hand button to be recognized to speak. If you want to speak in opposition or if you want to speak in favor, now is the time to do so. Okay, going once, going twice. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
Do we have any council of questions? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Council Cox.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council amend GCO Chapter ten, Waterways, Section ten dash fifty-one E, fees by deleting the $100 fee in the last sentence in the section and to read as follows. A season pass for permitted mooring holders within the boundaries of the Gloucester Harbor launch in a limit of four people will cost $150, and I so move.
I'll second that.
A motion's been made by Councilor Cox, seconded by Council Memhard. Any other discussion, councillors?
Just working with TJ, we, we found that there was an error like what he said earlier, and it just, it went to Waterways Board and it just never got to us, so just a minor correction.
Great. Better late than never, that's all.
Yeah, before the season, so we're good.
Yeah, good. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilor Cox, seconded by Council Memhard. I will call for the roll call. Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Memhard.
Yes, and thank you for bringing this forward before the busy summer season.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Eric.
Yes.
And Councilor Pat.
I will vote yes, but just a quick question. I, did I miss it? Did you, did I hear you close the public hearing?
I did.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, so we have a roll call vote, nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, thank you, TJ. Appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
You too. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business for council vote, the city council vote pursuant to section, to the city charter, section two dash six, council access to information.
All right, so I will move that pursuant to our city charter, section two point two dash six, council access to information to require the mayor to attend a city council meet, remote meeting on May third, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Excuse me, Councilor LeBlanc, it would be an executive session?
Yes, this is going to be an executive, an executive session on, is it on the fourth or the third? Joanne, this is going to be on, hold on one second.
On Tuesday, the fourth?
The fourth, yes.
Yeah.
So I will amend my motion because I said- So I will amend my motion because I said the third, so I'll amend the motion to make it state. May third, May fourth, twenty twenty one and I shall move.
Second, is this going to be after our budget meeting?
This is going to be after the, yes.
Okay, or the, I'm sorry, the, the presentation of the twenty twenty two budget.
Yes. Okay, so motion to amend, the, uh, motion to read. May fourth, twenty twenty one has been moved and seconded. Um, any other discussion on it? All right, so I'll do a roll call vote on this real quick. Councillor Cox.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc, yes. Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Yes.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes, May fourth be with you.
Yes. Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
And councillor Pat.
Barry, you're muted.
Yes.
All right, so back to the main motion. Motion passes to amend on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, so back to the main motion with the corrections, um, councillor Cox.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc, yes. Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Yes.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
And councillor Pat.
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Uh, madam clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Is councillor request to the mayor.
All right, um, so I will start off with councillor O'Hara.
I'm good right now, thank you.
All right, councillor Pat.
I'm good also, thank you.
All right, councillor Nolan.
I, I don't have a request, but I, I do want to say something. I did read it on social media today or yesterday, people banging up on the DPW. And, um, their work and what's going on. Um, we schedule things accordingly for weather and for budget. And it is convenient for a few minutes or maybe twenty due to the work and infrastructure. It has to happen at some time, but don't bring down or point fingers at our employees.
Yes.
They work hard and I just want you to all understand that. Just don't be pointing fingers at them. Thank you.
Yep, good, uh, it's a good one Sean. We all should feel that way toward our GPW. You know, we have to get things done, um, especially before the summertime. All right, uh, councillor Memhard.
Yes, thank you. I, I do have a request to the mayor, uh, on behalf of, uh, residents in my ward. Uh, to see if we can get the DPW at some appropriate time to try and address the, uh. Dilapidated and unsafe sidewalks, uh, that are in the area of East Gloucester Square. Thank you.
Thank you Sean. Uh, councillor McCarthy.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, councillor Holmgren.
Nothing, thank you.
Councillor Cox.
So I want to kind of piggyback on what councillor Nolan was, um, talking about. And I, I think it would only benefit us because I, I did also see, um, within the last two or three days. A lot of chatter about potholes and why is this street getting paved over that street? This one's in worse condition. Um, I put a request in eight years ago to get the municipal lot, um, on, off of Warren. To get paved and redone. I, it was in really, really bad shape. So I'm grateful that it's being done. And it also took me eight years from putting it on a list to getting it done. So, um, there is a schedule with DPW. Um, there's also a lot of contractors out right now and it's not necessarily always DPW. So, um, I guess it would be helpful. I don't really want to ask Mike to come before us to give us a status. But even just an email saying, you know, the overall, you know, this is what's happening. This is who's on Washington, this is who's on Warner, you know, and, and some of the bigger, bigger projects that we're dealing with right now. Like the Trash Street Project, um, National Grid replacing, um, equipment on Washington. Stuff like that. It was just an overall picture of what is happening so that we may speak intelligently. I know this might be an oxymoron on Facebook to these issues. Um, would, I think would be extremely helpful. I, like I said, I don't want to drag Mike before us to do that way. Whatever he's more comfortable with. I know an email is also time consuming, but I don't know. I, we've got to have some kind of update so we can help battle this crisis on Facebook.
Good luck, we're battling crises on Facebook.
Right.
I have, I have a solution.
I did use oxymoron, so.
I have a solution, stay off of it. Anyway, um, councillor Gilman.
Um, so I have a couple of things. I, I have two that have a budget impact that I just wanted to bring up again. Um, one was my council order of twenty oh eight. And it kind of reflects a little bit on what Patty Page mentioned earlier. Um, requested the mayor, from the mayor, uh, of the mayor, that the feasibility of continuing the use of Zoom technology. After COVID nineteen state of emergency ends and in-person meetings at city hall resume. Um, that this be explored. Um, this would enable members of the public who cannot physically attend meetings to easily view and listen in on meetings. For permitting authorities, including city council, including standing committees, planning board, CONCOM, licensing board and ZBA. And, um, councillor, actually, we had brought this up a year ago in April. As something that we wanted to consider and budget time is here and I just want to plant a seed that it. I, I've heard so much positive feedback about increased transparency. And the convenience of being able for even us to be able to go and listen to board meetings that. In the past, we'd have to sit at city hall for three or four hours and then wait for something to come up at planning board or ZBA. It's a convenience for everyone and I don't think it's all that expensive. So that's very important to me. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up that has a budget in, impact was my request, two thousand twenty one oh two four. And that was more recently request to the mayor that during the fiscal twenty two budget review. The administration considered the feasibility of budgeting for quarterly muni code updates. For the Gloucester Code of Ordinances. And this is something that we've wanted to do for quite some time. And to be only able to do this once a year just doesn't seem right when we try so hard to get our citizens. Accustomed to being able to look on the website to see the most current information. And it comes with a cost, but again, I'm planting a seed, again, the things that I had put in. Um, I've got some other council requests, um, that I was going to bring up that haven't been addressed. But I had a really good talk with Krista Coranza this afternoon and we talked a little bit about. Um, how we can get back to really closing out all these requests to the mayor. And I don't think I need to bring them up, except I appreciated the conversation about constituent services. So thank you so much. Um, and I've got three positive things I just wanted to say. I'll be quick. Number one. Um, the board of health meeting last week on the mosquito control was so helpful. And if you haven't watched it, I would encourage that you zoom in and listen to it. Um, and number two, yesterday's, um. The meeting on the open space, the forum was second to none. It was really well attended and very well done. And it, I, I learned a lot and I took lots of notes and it's a continuous process. So councillors, um, just kudos to Jill and Greg and all the people, the mayor. Um, who are just driving this process and it's going to be a seven-year plan for open space. It's timely and it's really in everyone's high interest right now. So, um, I just wanted to, to make a shout out for that. And then finally, um, the Human Rights Commission, I sat in on that yesterday just to listen to the conversation. About the civility, um, resolution, um, that they, and I was absolutely impressed with the folks on that call. And, um, I was really proud to just be sitting in and listening and councillor Holmgren represents us on that. So thank you and, um, I appreciate everyone's hard work in all these areas. Thank you.
Thank you Belle. Um, I have a couple of things, um, so on, on traffic matters, just, just to give everybody a little clarification. On the traffic commission, you know, with them being advisory, if, if, if it's just a matter of putting up a sign. Um, or, you know, but I've got something coming before O and A next week to put up a fifteen-minute sign. You know, to save time instead of going to traffic, I mean, it's just a sign, we, this, the council can vote on this themselves. They can send it to ordinance administration. Without having to get it tied up in council to, uh, move it along quicker. Um, if you're going to change an ordinance or if you're going to look at the traffic patterns or a speed study, then definitely go through the traffic commission. Uh, but if it's just a simple sign of putting more signage up, um, we can do that at the council level. So it doesn't necessarily have to go to traffic. Um, my other point of, um, I want to express is, you know, what happened at the beginning of the meeting? Little Roberts Rules one oh one for everybody. Um, if, nobody likes the way I'm running the meeting. Um, it's a little rule you can call, it's called challenging the rule of the chair. Okay, so if anybody wants to pull that out, the challenge, why I do something or how I do something. Then what we do is that's the right way to do it instead of having a full-blown argument. Um, where everybody can see it, we have a discussion, then it goes to a council vote on whether the ruling of the chair is correct or not. So that way it puts it on all of us on how to manage things. So that's the correct way to do this instead of pounding fists and yelling back and forth at each other. So that's a little city council one oh one for everybody. Um, and my request to the mayor would be to, um, reach out to our police department. Um, one of my pet peeves is people parking on the sidewalks. See a lot of people parking, um, way up on the sidewalk to make sure traffic gets through. But what ends up happening, it, it impedes pedestrian traffic and then people end up walking out into the street. So, um, if we could notify our police department to take a look at things, um, you know. You shouldn't be on the sidewalk anyway and it's for pedestrians. So, um, we really need to step up our, our parking, um. You know, on sidewalks, it's just, it, it's, I, I've seen people with baby carriages going around cars parked on sidewalks. So, um, that would be my request to the mayor. Um, and if there's anything else, um, well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Cox, seconded by councillor Memhard. All right, uh, only adjournment. Councillor Cox.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc, yes. Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
That big moon is coming up in Melissa, you better get out there, yes.
And it's very nice to see you Sean. We appreciate seeing you tonight, thank you.
A pleasure to be here with you all, thank you.
Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
And councillor Pat.
I didn't get a chance to go get my robe, but yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you everybody, have a good night.
Good night.